Welcome, everybody, to our council meeting, July 27, 2020. And call to order, council meeting for 2020. Let's go ahead and have a word prayer, and then we'll get started. Father, we thank you for today. We thank you, Lord, that we can gather here to come together and, Lord, just provide us guidance, wisdom, and direction in all of the decisions that we make. Father, we ask that you would be with our townpeople. We ask that you would be with those employees that have COVID, that have been exposed. Father, we ask you for just your mercy, Father God, and just ask that you would be with our firefighters, our policemen, Father God, those that are out there on the streets and protecting us. Lord, we ask that you would be with our servicemen overseas and here, Father, as they continue to fight and to fight the COVID and fight down all the unrest that's coming around. For we ask this in your name, Jesus, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Does anybody have a chance to look over the agenda appropriate? Can I get a motion to approve the agenda for now?
I make a motion that we approve the agenda.
All better, unanimous, thank you. Please come up, say your name, and relive.
Okay, my name is Steve Johnston, I'm in the Laurel Lake subdivision.
We need to inject for this society. This is actually not in the, we already had the agenda made, and he had asked to come in and talk about it. So it's on the agenda now, but since Public Parents is five, just so they'll know what they're looking at, if they're looking at stuff in the booklet.
Okay, so am I good?
You're welcome. Yeah, I figured that one, no, let's give it to you, too, and help us get it in and out, too. So, sorry.
All right, Mayor Green, city council members, thank you for coming down to come before you today. Mayor Green, I would like to thank you for your willingness to speak with me and help me solve some hard issues and difficult issues. You've always kept an open mind of communication, and so for that, thank you. Kelsey, you made yourself available to help me solve some community issues quickly and efficiently, so I thank you for that, too. It's been very, very helpful. My experience with the city council has been all positive, and I am hopeful and excited about the City of Nelson's future. If you have my full support. For those of you who do not know me, my name is Steve Johnston, I'm 48 years old. North Georgia's been my home for the past 20 years. I am a current resident of the City of Nelson since 2017. My wife, Christina, and I have three beautiful children, all born here in North Georgia. We have been small business entrepreneurs for the past 20 years in the building industry. I co-founded Jay Brothers, a company which is still in operation today in the city of Jasper, and I am currently serving as president and ACC chairman of the Laurel Lake Property Owners Association. So that's a little bit about me. The report that I handed you, and I think it's already in your file, earlier is about the road conditions in Laurel Lake subdivision. I personally walked all the roads in the Laurel Lake subdivision with Steve Ralston and Larry of the Cherokee County Public Works Department. I asked them to evaluate the road conditions. They stated that the overall road conditions in Laurel Lake are in good condition, but they also found that 2,526 feet of roads are failing in need of immediate attention. The report I had given you from the Cherokee Public Works Department is for the costs, the locations and needed repairs. The repairs of the 2,526 feet of Laurel Lake roads, they estimate completing in two days with a cost under $30,000. These repairs will increase the life of our roads for several more years. I had walked around the city of, or the part of Nelson, or not Nelson, I'm sorry, excuse me, I walked around Laurel Lake earlier, about three months ago, to get the HOA renewed, and during that time, I tried to get a petition to find out who's interested in roads, because I know it's been an issue for about five years now. At least, the past group that was in there had brought it up several times. And so I thought, you know, I mean, maybe resurfacing all the roads is unrealistic. Maybe we should just look at the stuff that's bad in there, and that's what that report is about. It's about the bad spots. $3,000 is a reasonable amount of money. So the petition that I gave you, the copies of, were 60 signatures of the people that actually live in Laurel Lake. I would have gotten more, but COVID stopped me from going door to door, so I stopped that. So, what I'm asking for, Mayor Green, city council members, I'm asking you to consider amending the upcoming capital improvements plan, scheduled to be approved in August, and include failing Laurel Lake roads. I will make myself available to create the amendment alongside city council member Miranda, so that it can be added to the capital improvements plan. I'll make myself available whenever you need. And finally, I'd like to take this opportunity to formally announce that I will be running for the open city council seat. I would like to be part of the solution of the City of Nelson's needs. I will be a strong supporter of honesty and integrity, and I will be an advocate for the rebuilding of the City of Nelson's roads, sidewalks, and waterways. Thank you.
With that said, we just had a study done of all the roads in Nelson. It was about nine months ago, roughly. Laurel Lake, we do have the roads for Laurel Lake on here, and they were good, in very good condition, with the exception of Old Nelson Road, and it was fair. Well, that's not in Laurel Lake, although. So I've got Laurel Lake, and...
We were trying to turn it...
They were good.
It's a huge spreadsheet, we don't have a paper for it.
So you've got code, which is good. You've got Laurel code, which is good. That's fair, and it's a Nelson extra.
I'll send you a copy of that, so you can see it, because it's, we can't print it out and spread it out.
Not saying that there's not issues that have, I mean, that has risen since then. So we do plan on reviewing our capital improvement plan this fall. We had hoped to do it before now, but with all the stuff, everything kind of got stalled. And with a little bit of luck, we'll be back at it in September, and we're going to talk about our SPOSS from Cherokee County and the SPOSS from Pickens County, look at currently what we have, and then decide on, you know, what we need to do first. So that's where we are. And then we'll keep this and put it in our, we'll put it in our file and take a look at it.
I do have the original email changed to Cherokee County, because everyone's looking at it.
We do have money for roads and streets. We have, we do have six roads that was on the list that was either poor or fair, and that was just for the council. That was Havercham, which we, you guys have already approved, and we're just waiting on the county right now. Baker Street, which was fair. Kennesaw Avenue, which was fair. Old Nelson Road, which was fair. And Nelson Oaks Drive, which was poor. So, no, I'm sorry, it was stable. So those are the ones that we have right now that we focused on, that will be added in there. I know there'll be some extra dollars for roads and streets, because didn't Cherokee have quite a lot of roads and streets funds in there?
Oh, yes. We've got the housing application thing just came in. I literally opened it today, and we've got to, we've got to submit it, because we've been seeing this.
Well, just saying that the Cherokee County Public Works Department looked at it, and they said that if they weren't in repair, then you were going to have to do a lot more later. So these were just the issues that they found that looked like they're going pretty bad pretty quickly, you know, they're past the, the base layer is shot. It was, it's been resurfaced once before, I think it was in 2001 or 2002.
2002, I think.
It was quite a long time ago.
We looked at, was it 2002?
I believe it was, yeah.
Right, it was resurfaced, but the base layer underneath, they found, is deteriorating, and the water is getting down between the two layers, and it's just in spots. Not all the spot, I mean, that's, Laurel Lake has a lot of roads, but...
Well, that's definitely something to take into consideration.
Please consider that.
When we look at our SPOSS that's up and coming.
Thank you for considering.
We're still waiting on Havercham, we're waiting, too.
We are, and also the...
This past week, and it's just, it's taking some time. We can't get answers from all of it right now.
It's hard to get anything out of it.
Well, everybody's, it's kind of like they start kind of back, and then somebody gets sick, and then everything gets shut down, and you don't have a lot of the street signs again. We'll get some, it's in both contacting this.
We've also contacted them again about the bones and the chief's work and all that.
They did, they did.
Yeah, they did, yeah. They did give it to us, too.
I put the ones that I ordered on Amazon, because I can't get any, the counties, I'm
trying to get an overall price per county. And I called down there, I got a girl in front that sent a message along, but I guess the department that makes them doesn't have a phone back there, so if the guy's not there to get, like, on his cell, we can't. So I've sent a bunch of emails, and I told them I may have to just actually physically go down there and talk to somebody instead of calling and calling, so. I have a giant list, so if not, we might go through, kind of, sign, which is going to cost a lot more than the county.
Okay. Any other, anything else in regards to Laurel Lake, or any questions for anybody?
I would just like to say, I think it's a good thing to bring it forward now, before we get started with all of our meetings, in regards to the capital improvement plan. I mean, because it's good to have those things ahead of time, to be able to, and this study, knowing that this is updated, this is really good, too, so.
I have a question, can I ask a question? Right now? I was just wondering, the capital gains plan, is it for, like, a period of time? Or is it just, do you look at it each year?
It's basically, we have a capital improvement plan that this council will review and revise. We, Cherokee County, we just was, that SPOSS fund just started a new cycle. And it's, is that one a four-year?
It's a cycle. It's a five-year plan.
Okay, that was a five.
But we do review it every year.
You do, yeah. And then, this will be the first time that they've reviewed one like this, where we'll say what's feasible and what's not feasible, and maybe prioritize some of our projects, so. But we, I know for Cherokee County, we did have quite a bit on this one that's roads and streets, so this would mean there was a need there. And then, we had the, we had the study done, you know, and, like I said, it's been about nine months, so. And the year, you know, put it in.
It's outstanding information, because it helps keep that going, for anybody, so we can try it.
You're welcome. Anybody else have anything to reply? In Public Parents? Right, thank you. Approval of the minutes for June the 2nd, 2020. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes for the June 2nd meeting?
I make a motion that we approve the June the 2nd.
I get a second. All right, unanimous, thank you. Can I get a motion to approve the June 15, 2020 minutes?
I make a motion that we approve the June 15th.
Can I get a second, please?
I'll say it again.
Okay, open. Hold on a second. I call it, you know that? And can I get a motion to approve the June 23, 2020 minutes?
I make a motion that we approve June 23, 2020 minutes.
Can I get a second? All right, unanimous, thank you. All right, department reports, police reports from Lieutenant Simmons. You have those, and we'll go ahead and...
Yeah, I have the one from the month of June, this was because we pushed the meeting back, and there were, it's in Angela, I think it was a title, but there was, it was for the month of June, there's a total of six calls, one alarm, one domestic standby, two information, one fraud, one residence check. None of the above calls were significant, June was quiet, Mike, the Nelson, and they continued patrol to patrol the city, it was call volume permits.
Okay, thank you very much.
Mayor's report, I don't really have a lot yet, still waiting to get back from Jeffrey. So something must be going on with his, with his group, because I've called several times and not gotten anybody.
They're not with, they gave you...
Yeah, they have all of our information, we just, they haven't gotten back with us, so.
I know, there's a lot of pick, our country's got a bunch of pick them up, which I bet you's been there, too.
Yeah, several churches are on here, too. Finance report from, turn it over to you, Brenda, for the finance report.
I don't really have much to report either, we're just coming in, we're not even finished with that first one, so. Just, we've got to, I've got to finish getting everything put into the system. Kelsey, I was trying to say about the bills, the remaining of the bills for last fiscal year coming through, so they're trickling in. Once we get that done, then we can finalize the 2020 budget, so. Other than that, I think payroll's in, we're running about 90%, that's right where we should be on that.
Can you get ready?
The two cents. Are you looking at the two cents? That was in the minutes to close that account, so I was waiting until they approved that, and then we've got to close that, we've got something in here to vote, to open anyone, because there was a letter from Pickens for the...
I knew that was going to come.
And we've got to get chat taken off, so it's trying to do it all at one time. I wonder if I can add anything to this.
Anybody else have anything for financial implications, three more minutes, I know you guys have been reviewing them. Brenda, thank you. Next up, item number eight, unfinished business. I'm updating our city website from Mr. Johnston.
Here, you won't want to be, you won't want? No, you're good. Well, let me throw up a chair for you.
Okay, I'll show the website up on here. Been working for a long time, it's been done for a while, I've been waiting for some documentation from staff that we've been working on.
We had this up in the room today, we did the draw runs. He's spent a good bit of time on there.
Forty minutes ago.
I'll go over some of this stuff. Keith has been, had asked for some of the old items, but then, old parts that we have, and he's been spending some time just updating them, so that we have the new city logo and stuff on them, just so that they're a little more uniform and not quite as outdated. There are some things that we're going to need to look over, specifically like our fee schedules and stuff, so. Most of these are ones that he's done recently, just that they've basically taken all the information from the current form and put it on, and have these papers with the current logos and stuff. We do need to go over the fee schedule, and we talked about some of that stuff previously. And Pickens County actually had fairly similar to ours, but it was, the formulations were much easier to explain to people, instead of the giant, larger problem you should give with your current. And even though the end result is within a few dollars, it's on the system.
We would also take care of the, we'd also take care of handout pockets, so if he had to come back out a second time, and his charge, his fee was $50, and a resident's charge, it's, we're incurred $25, and then for a second visit, it was the city, and then the individual is, so. So that would be a lot better.
This is an outrage. I just had this working. Hi, Kelsey.
Do you want us to move on to the next step, and then, when you get it going, we can go back to it? I'll give you a minute to kind of play with it. Is that okay, Phil?
Sure.
Go down to our new business, discuss and vote to open a new Pickens SPOSS account.
We got emails going on. Yeah, we've got an email this week, and a new, Brenda, I'd actually brought this up previously, because we knew this was coming in, but they were saying that since August 2020, they will start to receive the first revenue distributions for 2020 SPOSS. So we have kind of our account stuff set up, and have the banking information into them, but in order to open a new account, it has to be a council vote, so. I need something on the record, but in the minutes, to show that it's a vote on, and we don't have somebody down there opening random accounts.
Can I get a motion to open a new Pickens SPOSS account?
I might, I'll keep it open.
Second?
I'll take it.
All in favor? Unanimous, thank you. Okay, the next step, and then item B, discuss and vote on the mileage rate for Cherokee County side. Do you want to do this one, or you want to do it?
I mean, the mileage rate for Cherokee County, we just went with the rollback mileage, so there's no increase. Other than that, I think it was .807, I don't remember correctly, but .807, I think, is what the mileage ends up being this year, so that's only for the Cherokee County side. And the next, I think probably in September, once we get the digest from Pickens County, then we'll do this over again with Pickens. So I'd open that, again, rollback rate, no increase, says pretty simple.
Okay, can I get a motion to approve the mileage rate for Cherokee County side?
I make a motion that we approve the mileage rate for Cherokee County side.
Okay, thank you, all in favor? Unanimous. Okay, item C, discuss highway care on Wything Street.
This was on, I got a phone call, Ricky actually said something to me about it initially, and then Arlene Dean called, and I don't know if y'all familiar with that road? It has a really large right away, it's like 50 feet, but the road is very narrow. Apparently, there's a drainage pipe that runs through there somewhere. Somebody had taken a vehicle off the road, and I guess got it stuck, and the pipe that they put in there, my understanding was, it was plastic, so they kind of crushed it, and they got the vehicle out, and property owners were cleaning stuff up, so they were burning brush, and then, not knowing it was plastic, ended up melting some pipe, so now they've got kind of a mess over there, and they called to see if the city could fix it. So she said she was going to call you and talk to you about it, so I don't know if she's said anything to you about it as of yet. I haven't seen it, I know Ricky said something about it.
Is that one I want to learn a little bit?
It may be. It's back behind the new houses, but it's on, I think it's on Arlene Dean, Arlene Dean, Arlene and Joe Dean's property.
Is it on, so you're out of it?
It's on the right way, is what she had said. It is something we need to verify, but having a 50-foot right away, from what she said, it was on the right way, so it is something that we would need to verify, but if there's drainage issues, then you have a good idea of that stuff.
From San Antonio Service? No, I'm not.
They knew which vehicle it was that got stuck, but it wasn't an intentional thing, and it just pulled over, and I think it was just several incidents that led to just a big mess.
Ricky, have Ricky can clean it out?
She had said, honestly, she thinks Ricky could probably just dig that area out and put another pipe there, and she didn't think it was a big deal, but I don't know anything about that stuff, so that probably yells, area expertise, and me guessing at it, but she had said that she was going to try to stop and talk to you, she saw you, and she had a chance, but I didn't want it to slip away and not have anything to say about it.
But did Ricky went out and looked at it, see if there's something about it?
He's looked at it, he didn't say there was something he could handle to learn or not, but he has said something to me about it originally, so he is very aware of it.
I don't know why he looked at it, in my last week, he's like, thank you. I think they're going to take a video.
I wouldn't think so, because it's not like a major drainage thing, though.
Yeah.
And I'm still waiting on the estimates for the stuff at Cherokee County. I called a couple places, I called the county team, said, well, is he looking to clean up the...
Did they go up and push and ramble that?
Yeah, they did. We got that, then, but.
Next up, all he's working on is...
I don't know, it was working fine, I mean, I know that something has changed, and I don't know.
You've got a few minutes to work on it.
I can show it to you on the laptop. It just won't be up there.
You want to keep trying for a few minutes? We've got an executive session, and then we can come back.
It's just a few minutes in there. So it's up to you.
Yeah, it's pretty simple, it's like A and B, and it's...
We have to research your laptop.
It's half an hour.
It's an apple.
Mm-hmm. Call this up.
Can I get a motion to adjourn to executive session?
I'm not emotionally going to adjourn to that.
Get a second, please?
One second.
All in favor? Can I get a motion to adjourn from executive session?
I might vote to adjourn from executive session. Say.
All in favor? Right? Unanimous.
Okay, sorry for the delay, we are up here. So we built a new site, I'd say it's about 95% done, we still need a few things from sit, from staff, and some photography, and I hope we, council maybe can spend a couple hundred bucks to hire a photographer, because the current photography in the existing site is really outdated. So I'll walk you through it, and make that determination. So at the top of the site, it has what we call a carousel. It rotates by 30 seconds. Without having any content or great photography, I just went ahead and took the pictures of the three, or the four tracks, and made a composite out of it. It's something to put in the carousel at the top, it's very common in websites to have a carousel. This is a stock photo, it isn't Nelson, but we had to plug something in there, and that's, here's the third one, I just, George is first Marvel City, I took some stock photography of some Marvel work. So what we need is some real photography of the city, and it's best to hire a photographer who has a good eye and a good equipment to capture, you know, the best of Nelson as best we can. And maybe the park, it might be, the road right into the city with the Nelson sign line, could be, you know, we could work that out, but that's where that would go at the top. The next section is what would be the most urgent things going on with the city. I put in six departments, it's basically picked up from the existing site, we're not refreshed yet, because I need to establish whether this you want to put in there. Obviously, the agenda, the city council meetings, all the things that are urgent, that would go in this section in the mail. You click it, opens it up to another page, and whatever the content is, that's what it would be.
So our current agenda would be there, or would it be with this, with this house previous agendas as well?
There's a place on the side that has all the background, all the past agendas, under government, that I'll go through with in a little bit. We were able to pick up all the archival documents from your current site and imported in here.
Okay.
So these are places to, just whatever the hot news, and they're eligible, so if, from week to week, if you wanted to say, you know, Mrs. Jones painted her house, or something like that, whatever you kind of make it first, or what, so any minute that goes on the site, they see a change in, there's a constant change in the side of new, and what's happening. Maybe this gentleman, you know, appearance here, or it could be the park improvement, it could be capital improvement plan, whenever you feel is urgent. And again, it's all eligible. We build a CMS system into the backend that will allow, Kelsey, whoever you assign, if you need help with us, we can do that. Two man is the whole backend, you don't have to go to an outside service, you're able to do it through the CMS section, it's a content management system that we built into the backend. You just go down the homepage, it picks up the city hall mission statement, and that's the homepage. Got a map, how to find you, location, hours, contact, employment, again, that's just picked up from the existing site. If you want to clean some of that up and change it, that's fine. We go back to the top, we go above, we have history. So it carries the carousel again at the top, we need pictures again, so this is a rewritten history page, the, I worked with a copywriter, and he spent a lot of time, and rewrote the history of Nelson, I sent it off to Sue to have her look it over too, see if she wanted to add or delete or anything to it, but it's quite a bit different, and it's current contemporary, and we also added a section of notable Nelsonians, so that would be the Claude Akins, maybe military people who passed away that were from Nelson, whatnot, so we gave some identities to people from Nelson who have some notoriety. Okay, next, I mean, about navigation, our churches. So I had the page about the churches, it's going to load slow, because these are stock photography, they're not the real churches, again, that's why we could use a photographer to come in, take some, we're doing nice shots of the four churches, and, but the copy is current, so in other words, what it says about the churches is accurate and current, but the pictures are obviously not the churches, so, plus the page about, about the churches in there. Next, education. Created a page about, a little bit of history about the education that was here a long time ago, and I thought it'd be a good place maybe to put the new school that's, that's here now, put their logo, and maybe a little bit about the school, so, and the history about education, so again, it's just about the city. Obviously, the marble industry, this is picked up from existing, you can see, it needs work, for, for the biggest employer here, in the biggest history that we have, it's, it's anemic for content, so it, it has to be, more copy has to be written, I've talked to Evan about getting some more pictures, he gave me a great shot of hands actually making car, carving, you know, so I want to work with him, maybe to upgrade these pictures a little bit more, maybe we could have put a video on there of some of the saws moving and whatnot, it certainly needs to be enhanced more, because it's an important part of the photos, we just picked up the same photos as before, this is, we could put as many as you want, you could put a hundred photos there if you want. Again, I was going to work with Sue on maybe getting a little bit more diversity in the photos, and put some captions under them and whatnot, so people could walk through a little more of the history of the city. And picked up the same geography and demographics. Tyler, I did do a little research, and I think altered a few of the numbers in there, made them current, because the data was pretty old, and you can in the government. This is where we lose the carousel, and we go to the city logo now, as we get in the government, we highlight the city logo at the top, obviously the mayor, and all of this can, you know, update everything it says, it's just. City council, hoping tonight you get a new picture of the city council, it's obviously an old one, and again, lady here agreed to take a picture, so maybe if you could wait for a minute, we'll get you together and take a, a current picture. So it has each person's name, you click on, under the name, and it'll go to your email address to send you an email if you need that, and then there's videos, if they're already, and here's where we have the two hundred, all the meeting agendas picked up from your current site, going back to, far back to 2013.
Does all the links separate, so you?
Mm-hmm, so all links to those. Government. You've got all the past agendas, meeting minutes, again, it opens up to any links, I don't have any minutes, so, to put in there, but if I was provided, man, it's, we would love those in on the page, so, that's why I have to sit down and work with staff a little bit to, to finish out all these pages. So then it goes to capital improvement plan. That's all you had on your existing website, certain improvement on capital improvement plan. So, interesting, all that information, there's still documents, there's audits for 2015, 14, back to 2010, where they sit, it could use a little bit of a paragraph there, a bit of copy. Open records request, how to do it. Ordinances. This is where you click to the meeting page, now here are those where an opportunity, where I think you saw some of the documents, I, I took a dozen, half a dozen of existing documents, and I redesigned them and cleaned them up, and this is where I wanted to ask council to, okay, maybe I work with Kelsey and Miranda, whatever, maybe we take six months, we start going through all the documents, and just clean them up, all the same font, all the logo on the top, so that when anybody wants a document, they're looking at a nice clean copy of, of whatever it may be. So I think you've had samples of the work that was done, put a lot of time in it, and I'm happy to do it, and take the time, donate the time to, to clean up all of the, of those documents.
We'll get those out in order, we'll get those out in order, too. We'll get those out in order, too.
And maybe you could, I think you wrote it on, and maybe we could agree on the fee structure too, if you could pick that up from Pickens, is to just clean it all up and get it done, so that.
Separate file.
Yeah. Or, sanitation. Maybe get a little bit better picture of the two guys and the, and the truck.
Yeah, let's wait until we get the truck cleaned up.
And so. What I would suggest, you know, everyone take the time, I can send you the link to the website, and go through it, and maybe there's critical changes you would like to make, and I would do that, ordinances. Probably works. Not much there, that's, it is. Fees. Not much there, just a fee schedule here, touch through to. So that's a document that we can redo, so you have the logo on there, and the line spacing, you could probably drop off two or three pages, just by type setting it nicer. And online payments, we built, you're able to access your property tax invoice, your trash bills, Google Catching Voice, and then you can pay them online, there's a backend feature that we built in, that we'll have to train Kelsey how to add new customers in and take them out, but it's very simple page, it's all user-friendly to manage all that. Next is activities, you've got the baseball field, took a picture of the sign there, and here's a part, got a couple pictures, I think we could use better pictures of the park, bigger pictures, you know. Photography would help, this side, nature walking trail. Now we go back to the carousel on top, because we're away from government, and we have two pictures of the walking trail, maybe, yeah, again, maybe we get a family walking down the trail instead of just no people in these shots, you know, make them more attractive. And the last is the marble museum. A few pictures there, again, those. I, I think the, the marble history should be greatly expanded on the page, because it's what the, we were talking before, it's a big part of the city's history. Resources, links, and contact page, and that's the same as before, you have pictures, this is not the most glamorous picture, but that could be improved, and then contact information, and that's generally the site.
Anybody have any questions?
Site's ready to launch. Site's pretty much ready to launch tomorrow, and. So if you call me, we'll do launch.
We'll do one. Yeah, I do want that, it's, it is nice. You're missing information, I know you're.
A little bit of photography, we can get the council, maybe kick in a couple hundred bucks for a professional photographer to spend the day with me and go around, and supplement the photography on the website, it really, really needs it.
Have you spoken with anybody as far as photography, do you have?
Yeah, I, I have a couple people who've said that they would do it, and it's a great price.
Can you forward, Kelsey, the front?
Sure.
And we need to settle August meeting, because technically it's August 3rd, so, you guys all want to come back and see each other next Monday, week. If you want to push that, maybe like me, I'll bet. If you want to push that back, since we just had this one, we're set to make that. Yeah, just because there's not a lot yet, and everything's a pop-up, and we just have, so, it's your holiday. The phone is the.
Love it.
The next Monday, 17th would be on Monday.
Seventeenth, does that sound good? Any questions for Keith, with regards to the, what's.
When are we going to get all the information?
He's waiting on Miranda and Kelsey right now, to provide that information for, is it sanitation, no, I don't.
We need to do something with the fee schedule, that has to be better than on.
That's, that's an important vote, so that it clears the future for us to work together, just get the documents cleaned up and added as, just as we go.
Please did one back.
But the site could be launched now, the property tax component and payment has to be linked with your payment, there's a couple of technical issues, that'll take maybe forty-eight hours, you know, to, to put together, and then a little bit of time with Kelsey on the backend, and how to, how to use the backend.
Just dummy.
Is it? You, you've done it very well.
I might be able to, I think I'll be able to pay my trash bill, maybe it'll be counted down.
We can pay it on one now, but it's not, it's one of those, like, you can get to it from the website, but it's a process.
It's so hard to, so hard to whenever. Can I, can I get a, maybe, can I get a motion to adjourn?
I might vote to adjourn.
All in favor? Our second, need a second verse. All in favor? You know this, thank you.